Hello, I'm Lorette Legan, President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Chamber membership and our Board of Directors, I want to thank you for joining us for our Forum Onslow. The Chamber works with government agencies on issues that affect our business community. We monitor legislative issues that impact local business. We promote partnerships between business, government, military, and education. And we use these forums to create awareness on topics that are important to our entire community, such as the election of those that represent us on the state and local level. We are pleased to have Duke Energy as the sponsor of this Meet the Candidates forum. And now, a word from our sponsor.
Hello and welcome, candidates. I am Lauren Wargo, the District Manager for Government and Community Relations at Duke Energy. We are proud to sponsor these candidate forums and thank the Chamber of Commerce for coordinating this event. At Duke Energy, we are committed to providing reliable and affordable power as we focus on the Carolina's Carbon Plan, which will concentrate on reducing carbon emissions by 70% by 2030 and reaching net zero carbon by 2050. This commitment to creating a cleaner environment will include transformative and innovative strategies, including renewables and grid investments. Please allow this message to express our appreciation for your commitment to public service.
And now it's time to begin our program. So I'm going to turn it over to our moderators, Mr. Elliot Potter and Mr. Glenn Hargit. Gentlemen, it's yours.
I told Glenn I wanted to turn this back on earlier. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Butler. You saved us a lot of trouble having to change the order. Here we go. I wanted to remind the audience, we have, we've talked to the candidates on the forum today that are participating in this Board of, School Board forum. We have, we have four seats that are open on the school board. We have nine Republicans that are running for those four seats. Hence, we have a primary, a rather crowded primary in our forum today. Let me talk a little bit about the rules of engagement that we have for our forums. And I want to remind you, this is a forum, it's not a debate, so that we ask that you address the questions that are posed to you. And we ask that you speak to the audience and not to each other. We try to keep the questions general in nature so that nobody feels singled out. For today, because we have to alter the time limitations because of the number of candidates, today we'll have opening remarks. And Mr. Butler, we're going to start with you and go down the table for that. But we have opening remarks that will start for, that'll last for 90 seconds. You have a 90-second time limit. And the candidates are asked to state their names, provide some background, and then we also would like for you to give us an idea about why you are running for office on the Board of Education. We will alternate the order of questions best we can. We are allowing only one rebuttal card today, and we will attempt to call on rebuttals in the order that you raise your hand. So we've talked about that. If there's something that you would like to add to or say in response to another candidate, raise your card, and we will take notice of that. And at the completion of that round of questions, we will go back and call on anyone that might have indicated that they would like to offer a rebuttal. You will also be given a chance for a closing statement, and that too will be 60 seconds. So basically, 90 seconds for opening and everything else is 60 seconds. We do have a system for letting you know how much time you have. The green means you're in pretty good shape. The yellow means you're about 30 seconds away from being gonged. And at the end of the, at the end of the, you'll get a red, and I've asked you that you please just complete the sentence that's your own. And if you need to pick up your thought, you can do that either in the closing statement or perhaps use a rebuttal later on. Let's see, we are really, you know, this Chamber forums, we've had these for a long time, and Glenn and I have been working on them for about 40 years. So some, even before that, we have had really great luck with, and a lot of cooperation as far as maintaining the decorum. And that goes for candidates and the audiences that we've had. And we, it's a great tradition, and we respectfully ask that you honor that tradition and we can keep things moving. We would ask the audience, please, to refrain from applause during the program. We are hoping to keep today's session to about 90 minutes. So if you do need to move around, that's a little bit long for some folks, including me. But if you do need to move around, please do it as quietly as you can because we are on the air and people want to listen. I will offer this, that is, that if somebody does disregard the guidelines that we have on decorum, you could be asked to leave. And it sounds pretty harsh, I know. But as I said, we keep the decorum, we keep this, we take it very seriously. And if we can just act quickly, we'll do it. We want to keep things moving in the right direction. So if there are any questions from the panel of candidates, we'll take them now. You think? Okay. Well, in that case, I'm sorry, Mr. Garvey, I told you you'd start, but we're going to start with Mr. Butler since he came in. And candidates, I'll remind you that you have 90 seconds each.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Randall Butler, referred to as Randy most of the time by my friends and family. I raised on a dairy farm up in New Hampshire, joined the Marine Corps in '72, met my lovely wife in '73, got married in '73, been married 50 years. I stayed 22 and a half years in the Marine Corps. After I retired from the Marine Corps, I went to Northeast Gulf High School and taught Navy Junior ROTC. And I did that for 13 years, and that was a lot of fun. I was a certified teacher with Tena, so I really enjoyed that. I had a lot of experience with students. I'm a father of three biological children, all girls. That's why I don't have no hair. Plus, I've got one daughter we adopted, she was one of my students from Ecuador, and she's given me three lovely grandchildren. So I've got 12 grandchildren, I've got two great-grandchildren, and one on the way. And the reason I am running for school board is because I, I'm really concerned about the security in our schools. I know we can do something better than what we're doing now. I'm also concerned about the curriculum in schools, and I'm also concerned about good teachers staying in our schools. So I've got two of my daughters graduated from Onslow County Schools, and I got two grandchildren that graduated, and I've got two more coming up getting ready to graduate. Actually, I've got three graduates from Onslow County Schools. We've got good schools, we really do. We've got good teachers, so I want to help. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Garvey.
My name is Albert Garvey. I currently serve on the Board of Education, and I am seeking to be elected back to the Board of Education. I'm a product of Onslow County Schools. I graduated from Southwest High School. I also retired from Onslow County Schools, serving 30 years as a teacher, coach, and a principal. My family is a family of educators. My wife of 38 years, she retired from Onslow County Schools. My son, my daughter-in-law are also teachers here in Onslow County. And I have a granddaughter that one day will be attending Onslow County Schools. So I have a lot vested into our system here. I've always been an advocate for our students for over 30 years. I've been an advocate for our students, for our teachers, and I continue to do so as I serve on the board. I feel like education is a calling. It's not, by no means are we in it for the money. We're here to make a difference in the lives of our students. And now that I've retired, I feel like this is another opportunity to continue to advocate for our students and to help them be successful.
All right. Is it Ms. Haley or?
Hallie.
Hallie. Okay, Ms. Hallie.
All right. My name's Michelle Hallie. I've been in the Onslow County area for over 40 years. We moved here a lot longer than that, moved in the '70s for the school system. I'm married to my husband, Bill. We've been married 50 years. We have two children that are graduates of the Onslow County School System. I have one grandchild. I have had a real diverse experience in the educational system in Onslow County Schools. I started out just as a parent, a volunteer, substitute teacher, teacher, along with the state, worked the state assistance team, and at the county office as a Director of Professional Development and Academic Enrichment at one point. I have, I'm going to serve because I believe, and I'm a strong supporter in public education. And I think the way we can do that best is by working together collaboratively to support our staff, our parents, our community, and work together. I know in my heart that the way to achieve anything is openness, kindness, being proactive and positive in our interactions. And it's an honor and a privilege to be here today. I retired four years ago and really thought that I was going to ride the pine up in the nosebleed section. But when something's laid on your heart, it's time for you to take another journey. This is my new journey, and I do look forward to sharing it with you and being part of your community. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hamm.
Good morning. My name's Matt Hamm. I've lived in the Onslow area for 14 years. I'm a retired Marine. I was medically retired a few years ago. I live up in Hubert. And since I retired from the Marine Corps, I got my PMP, and I am finishing up my degree right now. I've got one class left in my undergrad. And then I'll, I'm kind of deciding between law school or seminary, between those two afterwards. But right now, I've been focusing on taking care of my family, which wasn't something I got to do a lot of when I was in the Marine Corps, and allowing my wife to focus on her career, which is also something she wasn't able to do while I was in the Marine Corps. I think the school system is a very important part of this community because this is a growing community. People are coming into this community, and in order to retain them, we have to have a quality school system. And I think there's a lot of deficiencies that I've seen that can be corrected. I'm not saying that nobody's trying, but right now, there's an atmosphere that bothers me where there's, it seems to be animosity between parents and teachers, which that is something that, as a board member, I would like to eradicate, and I'd like to bring everybody together, do whatever I can to bring everybody together and come up with solutions as a team together. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Long.
Good morning. My name is Suzanne Long. I was a military child. I graduated from White Oak High School. I married my husband. We will be married this summer. 40 years, he retired from the Marine Corps. He currently is a teacher assistant at New Bridge Middle. He has worked there almost 25 years. We have one son who graduated from Jacksonville High School in 2017, NC State in 2021. He recently got married. Today's his wife's birthday, so shout out, Emily. I retired from the Onslow County School System, having served as an elementary school teacher, middle school teacher, elementary and middle school assistant principal, principal. I then went to the central office, where I served about eight years as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and I ended my career as the Executive Director of the Exceptional Children's Program. I believe schools are the heart of their community. Schools are what has the ability to lift a community. So I'm running for the Board of Education to continue to be an advocate for public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oakley.
Good morning, everyone. I am Melissa Oakley, and I am running for reelection to the Board of Education. I am a mother of three, two of whom are minors in our public school system in the Dixon District. We made Onslow our permanent home in 2009 and have resided here in Sneets Ferry for the last 14 years. Over the years, I have served in multiple ways of volunteerism, philanthropy in our county. Professionally, I've taught preschool, worked in the medical field, tourism and hospitality, management, and much more. I hold a dual associate's degree in criminal justice and business administration, and am currently enrolled at University of Mount Olive for judicial studies. After election in 2020, I was appointed to the Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson's Fax Task Force investigating reports of indoctrination statewide. Since being elected to the board, my key platform points have been completed as our board has done great work. We have raised the teacher's supplemental income from 10% to 12%. Bus driver pay from $13 to $14 to now $16 with sign-on bonuses. Annual retention bonuses from $1,000 to $1,500. Full policy revision and more since 2021. I have always voted with the best interests of children, teachers, and our assets in mind, remaining fiscally conservative of your tax dollars. I am a constitutional conservative Republican Christian woman, and I am here to achieve your vote of confidence to continue the work. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rogers.
Hello. My name's Louis Rogers. I'm currently on the board, seeking your vote for reelection. Well, I was appointed last time, but now I'm looking for reelection. I'm a former 82nd Airborne paratrooper. I did, I worked fugitive recovery in California for nine years. I came to North Carolina, started working as a North Carolina private investigator. I also was part of the human traffic interdiction team for the last three years. And then I decided to become a clinical therapist, of which I do now. I practice trauma-focused therapy, and during my studies, I focused highly on policy advocacy. Since being on the board, actually, you know, I got to talk about my family. So I've been married for 18 years as of January 19th. I have four children. I have a 16-year-old boy, a 15-year-old daughter, six-year-old daughter, and a three-year-old daughter. So the reason why I decided to run for the board is because while I might not be a local from here, I am, I do come from a place that I've seen an education system run rampant. I've seen a community that was silenced by the district. I've seen a community that had a school district that did not hear from its community and essentially did its own thing. We just look on the news and you'll see it in almost every district in California. So my reason for running is to prevent that from happening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Urbansky.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Erin Urbansky. I am a Christian. I'm a small business owner. I'm a mother to a student that goes, that attends an Onslow County School. I'm a military spouse of almost 10 years, and I have a heart to serve. I do hold a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, so I do have an educational, education knowledge with a focus on safety. Safety obviously being a huge issue in our county right now. I do, my mission and the reason why I wanted to serve our community and on the Board of Education is because there needs to be, education needs to be united again. I do believe unity not only involves educators, but the kids, parents, and stakeholders involved. Unity starts with trust. I believe that trust is not the best right now, and I do, you know, if I am elected, I do promise to be transparent, trustworthy, and have our children's well-being in all aspects at the forefront. I plan to take a collaborative approach, not only with fellow board members, but with the community and local professionals. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Philip Williams. I'm a lifelong resident of Onslow County, a part of Onslow County Schools, graduated from Swansboro. My wife and I have been together for 30 years. She's a product of Onslow County, Onslow County Schools, graduating from Dixon High School. We have two daughters. Yes, my hair is standing as well. One's a graduate of Southwest High School, currently at UNCW, doing her internship at Northridge Park Middle School as a school social worker, and plans to be an employee of the Onslow County School System. Our youngest daughter is in middle school within the Onslow County School System. My career is 27 years in law enforcement, still employed with the Jacksonville Police Department. My wife has been in the school system for 25 years, working in the E.C. department. Over half my life, I've committed to this community for it to be safe, to protect it, serve in this community, and building relationships where there's been gaps between law enforcement, helping bridge those gaps. I'm always striving to be a good listener, to be transparent with people when I can, to try to help them understand why certain things were done, and try to end on a positive note. I'm a very respectful person and professional, and I hope to bring that to the school board.
Thank you, candidates. And I tell you what, Mr. Williams, we're going to start the next, the round of questioning with you, and we'll work our way back. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Glenn Hargit, who's going to ask your questions today.
Good day. Well, we've seen schools that have been rocked with violence from the effects of bullying, as well as teachers and staff and parents who are fearful of violence in the schools, and some of you have mentioned that. Just a couple of days ago, it was announced the Onslow County School Board will receive the largest grant from the State Department of Public Instruction's Center for Safety Safer Schools. School districts have been invited to submit proposals for cameras, detection systems for vapes and weapons, school leader training to help students with anxiety, trauma, or conduct problems, and mental health services. The $700,000 Onslow Grant is earmarked for training, safety equipment, and student crisis intervention. In addition to this grant, what specific actions do you support to reduce violence and increase school safety in Onslow schools?
Well, I stated before, I'm a veteran of half my life as far as protecting the community. We have a great partnership with the Sheriff Department, the Police Department, and our mental health resources with the school system. I see it monthly where they work together to help improve the safety and the mental health for our students, and also their families, help them provide families with mental resources. You know, I've heard some of the backlash for the school security assessment that was done and the money that was spent on that, but that also helped open up to apply for grants, to receive extra money. So I just, you know, I think we've still got to keep pushing forward and exploring new ideas to combat these situations and to help our students.
Okay. Ms. Urbansky, I will remind the candidates that you have an opportunity, if you need to have a refresh on what the question is, just ask us.
Can you please refresh the question?
Well, after all the introduction, the end of the question is, what specific actions do you support to reduce violence and increase school safety in Onslow schools?
Well, first off, I just want to thank everybody involved for, it wouldn't have happened without the voice and the vocalness of parents, the community, the board members, and all educators involved to receive that grant. So I think that's a huge congratulations to everybody involved for that. Specifically, I believe, in addition to, you know, the utilization of resources that are going to be able to be purchased with those funds, just the implementation in the schools, you know, directly when there are violent situations, and ensuring things are handled properly, efficiently, and in a timely manner, I believe that is a huge addition to the things, you know, the supplies to keep our schools safe.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers.
So I'll respond to the question with a quick, a question that I'll answer. The question is, what did we do prior to this assessment in Onslow County Schools? Because we've been buying devices, security, different things with our budget for security. How did we determine what we needed, if this is our first assessment that we've had? You know, so when I, when I look at the $700,000, I actually look at it as an opportunity for Onslow County Schools to do something that they have not done yet, and that is to involve the community in this process. We have an opportunity to involve the community in such a way that the community will feel safe, they will feel heard, and then they can see the progress that we make. That doesn't mean inviting them into the security sessions. It means letting them know that we're making progress with the money that we just got, we just received. So we have social workers in the community, we have counselors, we have nonprofit organizations that are willing to help, so I'd like to see them help. That's part of the security process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oakley.
First off, I want to say that everything that he just mentioned is already done in Onslow County Schools. We partnership with community agencies, including the law enforcement. We have our former sheriff sitting in this room right now, who was integral to us having more SROs in our school system today. Additionally, Sheriff Thomas, Chief Yanero, we have stronger relationships now with law enforcement than we have ever had at Onslow County Schools. The assessment that was already mentioned earlier by Mr. Williams, that opened a gate for us to be able to be at the top of the pool to receive the $700,000 grant funding, which is earmarked for certain things that we have requested. In those requests from Dr. Gardner and Director Dusty Rhodes, they were asking for things like HALO vape and threat detectors. These detectors will not only detect vape, it will also detect sounds and keywords that will help us have another layer to threats as well, being prevented and deterred in the school system. We're trying to get Narcan storage boxes because we have an opioid crisis here in Onslow County. We are one of the number one places in the state. So those are things that are integral to us having in our school system. And I could go on, but I'm out of time.
Ms. Long.
First of all, thank you, former chair, for being proactive and doing the work that got the grant for us. When we talk about school safety, that encompasses several things. That's physical plant, which Ms. Oakley talked about, all the things we need to do. But it's also school, school staff and student well-being. And my rule of thumb is hurting people hurt others. So I think there's a lot of work that we need to do to help students develop durable With that money and other money, we need to employ more personnel to help students with well-being. Thank you.
Mr. Hamm.
So in addition to all that, I think one thing that we're missing in our community is our retired military. And we can actually probably use a lot of them for volunteers for security in the schools. The sheriff is allowed to deputize anybody he likes. He's authorized to do that. So we can easily start a volunteer program with veterans in our community, and that will also get the community more involved with the schools and make kids feel safer. And that's just one idea I want to throw out there that I've had on top of all that. That's all I've got.
Okay. If you don't have a safe learning environment, we can't be successful, so that is key. We're going to have to look at, what have we done that was successful? What have we done that wasn't? Data, it's going to have to be data-driven. We have to look at all aspects of, and to do that, we've got to have buy-in from all stakeholders. This is going to be a community effort. This isn't just going to be on Onslow County Schools. We're going to have input from parents, from our communities, from our churches, any buy-in that's part of this, because we're all stakeholders in what's happening. As Ms. Long was saying, the mind, we had not just look at our physical plant, but the bodies and the minds of these children too. How are they progressing, what's happening? So we've got to figure out what we're doing that works, what isn't, how do we readdress it, and do we keep looking at it over time, keep going back and revising it? Because we're not going to find a one-size-fits-all answer, but we do have to do something. And I'm willing to work with everybody on that. Thank you.
Mr. Garvey.
Having served in the education system as a teacher and a principal, safety obviously is a primary concern, always has been. Students aren't going to learn if they don't feel safe. Safety has also been evolving. We're constantly improving, looking for new things, better ways to do things. A safety assessment was done in 2012, and when I, when I continue with this, I'm going to use the word "continue" because we are doing these things. But with this money, we're going to continue to upgrade and improve safety measures in our schools. We're going to continue to build relationships with law enforcement in the schools as well. Not only do they bring an element of safety in the schools, but they also help build positive relationships between the students and law enforcement, knowing that, helping our students understand that law enforcement is not the enemy, that they're friends, that they're there to be their friend and to help them and to keep them safe. We want to continue to hire social workers and counselors. Yeah, we spent $63,000 on a, on a, a safety assessment for the school system. It was well worth it. We have two law enforcement agencies in this county that support what we did, say we got our money's worth, and as a result of that safety assessment, we now have $700,000 to continue our improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Butler.
I didn't mention, but I was a, still a deputy sheriff in Onslow County. I'm retired, but I still do SRO duty. I did it, in fact, I'm working today at Liberty Christian Academy. As an SRO, and I was in charge of SROs for six years, and I would go check the schools. And one of the biggest problems I see is cameras are outdated, they're not clear, or they don't work at all, or the way they're directed is wrong, it should be directed someplace else. So I think we need to consider updating the camera systems, also the door security as you go in and out of the doors, because the way our schools are designed, they're designed a long time ago, and there wasn't a problem with, with security at that time. So during class changes, there's some doors that are open so kids can go through from different building to another building. But if someone's an active shooter that wants to come in and cause some problem, that used to go to that school, they know that door's open. They know where to go. So I think we need to do something with that as well. So I think, and also another deputy at, or a security officer at each high school, at least two. And I better stop.
Thanks.
I had much more, but.
I'm going to risk using this now early.
Okay.
Pray for me, in case I need to use it again later. I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that have been here. We already have bolstered online security, protecting students from predators and the risk online websites. We now have SROs in every school, too. At some of the high schools, about three of them, have implemented law enforcement officers on staff in the district. We also have a K-9 officer and a deputy handler. We have initiated- We have initiated established mobile metal detectors where we have seen the most data reflect at the athletic events and extracurricular activities. The most recent approval for evolved metal detection systems. The grant should cover those detectors, the vape detectors I mentioned earlier, the Narcan storage and things like that. So there's been a lot of things that are already mentioned as ideas that we already have established in the school system. Do we have all the layers in place? No. But as society continues to evolve, our security measures continue to evolve based on those data trends. So I thought that was something important to add. Thank you.
Okay, any other rebuttals on this issue? Okay, we'll move on to our next question. Mr. Hargit, we'll have it for you. We're going to start with you, Ms. Urbansky, and we're going to go to Mr. Williams and then back to the end of the table. We'll handle us that way. All right.
There's an expectation of elected leaders maintaining decorum and discussing issues with respect for all involved. This was the most requested question we had to ask of y'all. Yet there've been multiple examples of the type of personal agendas and unprofessional behavior in the current school system. There's also a question about modeling to students. What messages does the lack of decorum send to employees, students, and the communities? And what are your expectations of your behavior at meeting, and how will you engage with teachers, staff, and others?
I believe that when parents or anybody does not feel heard, they feel attacked. And when people feel attacked, they get defensive. So I do fully believe that listening, being open, being honest is going to take a lot of the current, I guess, heat that's currently on right now off. If people would just be open, honest, willing to have discussion, just because people want their voices heard. And for myself personally, I have a lot of experience serving, I have a lot of experience listening to people, and I just believe that, you know, when somebody feels heard, they feel more comfortable, and I think that would open up the dialogue for everybody to be able to get more situations handled and get more work done. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
The basis of the question is, what messages does the lack of decorum send to employees, students, and the community? And what are your personal expectations of your behavior at future meetings and when you engage with teachers, students, and staff?
I think it affects morale. I think, you know, if we're talking about recruiting people that are watching the meetings that might want to come with our school system, you know, the divide, I think it could affect their decision to come here. I think we need to be more respectful and professional. Not saying that we always have to agree on everything, but there's a way to go about I think that I've always, like I said before, I've always treated people with respect, no matter where they're at when I've been dealing with them. And I've been pretty successful at gaining their respect. I just say, yeah, professionalism, and, you know, it also affects the employees as well. It affects the morale, their attitude, and maybe what goes on at some of the board meetings. And to say that the young people watching, whether it's the parents or it's the board members, it's just not good for our younger children, so.
Okay, thank you, Ed. We'll swing around to Mr. Butler and head back in the other direction.
Respect is a two-way street, kind of like love. You've got to give it in order to get it. So if you don't give respect, you're not going to get it back either. That's working with people in general, especially, but when you're at a meeting, especially when you're supposed to be representing an entity, then you have to make sure you keep your cool about it. You can disagree, but there's a time and a place to hash that out, and that's not in front of people. That's behind doors. So my impression is if you're going to have a disagreement with somebody on your board, you don't air it in front of the people, you wait till it's over with. Now, if somebody out there wants to argue, they don't argue back, because what's going to happen if you argue? You're just going to get more dissension, and you don't need that. So especially dealing with students and teachers, treat them with respect, guess what you'll get back, respect.
Thank you, Mr. Garby.
I think obviously that board meetings are the place where we do the business of the school system. I think when people come, they come to be heard. I think all parties should be allowed to be heard. I think all parties should be respectful of each other. We are setting an example for our young people. I've always been taught you treat people the way you want to be treated, and we are setting an example on how to handle differences and how to compromise. And the bottom line is, is, you know, we keep saying it, but we're going to have to start showing it more that when we say it takes a community, it takes a community to raise our children. All stakeholders have to be involved, that's students, teachers, educators, that's parents, community members, it takes all of us. But we have to be able to communicate with each other and to be heard so that we can compromise and settle our differences.
Okay, Ms. Hawley?
I worked for the North Carolina State Assistance Team for quite a few years. I'd go into schools, and we were told to go, and we weren't always welcome. But I learned real quick, they didn't care how much I knew until they knew how much I cared, that I cared about your opinion and that I cared to listen to others. And that's a big part of it, is that open communication and collaboration. We're not going to always agree. I've been married 50 years, and believe me, we don't always agree, but I can listen, and then I can take it back and think about it. I don't have the answers, not all of them, but I have ideas. And when you get those ideas together, we're going to be successful. We all have the same thing in our hearts, I hope that's the agenda, what's best for our children. And when it's best for our children, it's best for our community. When you get everybody's buy-in, I can make good ideas, I give you good ideas all day long, but if you don't buy into it and you don't think you're heard, you don't care to listen. So I think the big thing is going to have to be a listener and working together. No, I might disagree with you, but I respect your view, and I think that's where we need to go with that.
Mr. Hamm?
Well, I think it sets a very poor example for our children, and obviously decorum is important, and if there's a disagreement, you should handle that in private. As an elected official, you're going to be dealing with public, angry public members all the time. You have to have thick skin, you have to be able to take the criticism, and you need to be able to not criticize back, because these people, they only get one chance to be heard, that is their chance to be heard, and if you're treating them apathetically, it just seems like they're being ignored, which is going to increase the anger. And we've seen the results right now. We see we have a fractured community where we have teachers and parents pitted against each other. We think we have team teachers and team parents. That's not how it should be, and I think the current environment has created that.
Okay, Ms. Long?
Thank you. I believe Kayla Anderson, one of the Ansel County teachers, said it best at the last board meeting. She said, "One, children are watching." And she said, "Two, we're all on the same team." So one of the things I know that a community, an organization, blessings flow from above, and if there's strife from above, it's hard for blessings to flow, and it's hard for, to see the purpose. The community needs to see the purpose of what a school system needs to do. Teachers need to see the purpose, and parents need to see the purpose. One of the roles and responsibilities of a board member is to be a good liaison. So I just believe productive discourse allows everyone to delve deeper, to solve problems. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Oakley?
Well, like it's already said, we will all never disagree, or agree, excuse me, all the time. The way it used to be whenever I was first elected to the board was we would argue in the parking lot or by phone. Me and Bob used to have an 11:00 a.m. phone call every Monday morning so I could get all the things out that I needed to say, but you never saw us argue on that board, because that was about maintaining decorum and being the example for children that we needed to be in Ansel County. But now we have a difference. We have where our board is divided, it's politically fractured. Children are not, politicians are politically minded, most of them. Most of them aren't even elected or registered to vote. So we need to lay that down, lay that down to the side sometimes and actually do the business of the people, what is in the best interest of every child that we serve. We have a difference between constructive criticism and destructive criticism. Constructive is where you mean well and you're bringing the positive point to the table. Destructive is when you're coming to attack a person. You don't have to like everyone, but as it's also already been said, you know, when you want respect, you give respect, and that also comes from the community. If you want us to do something for you, then at least give us the respect so we can hear you instead of being attacked. Thank you.
So I guess one of the things I'll just start with is, did we as a society forget what school board meetings are for? It is not supposed to be a platform for praise. We are here to conduct business on the board. There's good news and there's bad news. And then what happens is, we start seeing people say, "Because you disagree, you're being divisive." We're not even allowed to disagree, because I disagree with some of the things that happens on the board. And then what happens? We send emails and we don't get response, and then it has to go to the public. But we talk about conducting the business for the people. It's going to be discussed in public. The ones that point the finger saying you're being divisive, sometimes it's best to point the finger back at yourself and say, "Well, why is the person speaking publicly about this? Did you respond?" You know, one of the things I've learned as a therapist with my wife is, the best way to communicate is, the next time that person stops talking, see if you can recite everything that person said to you back correctly.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, I'm going to, Mr. Hamm, we're going to, for next round, we'll begin with you. We will walk our way back this way, and then Ms. Long will come back and work our way here. So they should not always be in the same order. Next question, Mr. Hargit.
Some of you have already mentioned this, so you don't have to do that part again necessarily, but we're asking, do you have school-aged children in non-public schools? And have you been endorsed by, or have you pledged support for any local, regional, or national platforms or movements? And are you running as a partnership with any other candidate?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot I was going first.
I forgot to.
All right, I do have children, and they do not go to public schools. They were in the Ansel County public schools for years, and I had many issues that were just piling up year after year. My issues were not being addressed, and I tried homeschooling for a year, and I realized that I'm not a teacher, and I do respect teachers. It's a very important profession. So I put my kids in Jacksonville Christian Academy. I wish I didn't have to. I would rather send them to the public school and save myself a lot of money, but I just couldn't in good conscience keep them in the school system here the way it was.
Ms. Hawley?
No, my children are grown and gone. They were both graduates of Ansel County schools. My daughter graduated Jacksonville High School and our son from Richlands High School, but I still have a stake in this. I care for children, I care for our community. You get one chance in life to do something really cool, and that usually is to affect what a child does and what they're going to do in the future, because you are touching the future then. And I know that, but I believe in public education, where we make sure every child has an excellent education that lives here. We moved here in the '70s for the school system. I thought, wow, what a place. This is where I want to raise my child, and I want other people to feel the same way. I want them to have that passion to say, wow, what a place. This is where I want to raise my child, and that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm here today. I want to help bring that back.
Mr. Garby?
My son is obviously graduated. He's teaching in Ansel County schools, but he did graduate from Southwest High School as well, so he is a product of the school system. I'm running as a retired educator, and that's all I'm running as. Like I said, I've always wanted to make a difference in the lives of children. I did that for 30 years in the school system, and I want to do that as a board member. And I get that affirmation every time I go out into the public, because I come across former students, and I see how successful they've been, doctors, caretakers, owning their own HVAC systems, in the military, some of them are getting ready to retire, which dates me, but that's where I get that affirmation. And I want to help our teachers enjoy that experience as well. I want them to have their students be successful so that when they go out in the community, they get to reap that reward.
Okay, Mr. Butler?
Well, I have, all my children are grown, but I have grandchildren that are going to Ansel County public schools. And believe it or not, I love them just as much as I love my own kids. We have a very, very tight family. Every time somebody goes to the hospital, they say, "Where do all these people come from?" Because we all stick together. So to me, the most important thing we have other than Jesus Christ is our family. And so I want to make sure my grandchildren, and of course, my great-grandchildren, when they start going to school, are safe in our public schools. I want to make sure not only safe physically, but safe from harmful teachings that might be coming, or trying to be coming to our schools, and stop it, or nip it in the bud, as Barney Fife used to say, before it gets there. So, and I think we have some organizations here keeping our kids safe in schools, some great organizations that I've talked to, and I support them.
Okay. Do you want to repeat the question?
We're asking, so that everyone knows, do you have school-aged children in non-public schools, and have you been endorsed by, or have you pledged support for any local, regional, or national platforms or movements? And if you're running as a partnership with other candidates?
And we're back to Ms. Long?
Well, I'll answer that part. No, no partnerships, none, none at all. I don't even know that I would know how to go about that. So as I mentioned, I have a grown son. He did spend his K-12 career in Ansel County schools. I don't think anybody in this room doubts the hard work of all the people who work in a school system, whether it be our school system or another school system. I think one of the other members stated that it's a calling to work in a school system. So we have people that work many, many, many hours. I once had a mentor say to me when we were talking about how many hours we work, and some of you know where I live, so you know how late I came home, but one of my mentors said to me, "I have to believe that if I'm out there working that hard, somebody else is doing it for my child." So, thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Oakley?
I've already answered that I have children in our Ansel County public school system. I've always had my children in the public school system. I believe firmly in public education and everything that it brings. It is the foundation of this nation. I do not have any partnerships with other candidates, other than the ones that I work with already on the board in that capacity, but as candidates, no, we have not formed any allegiances. I'm also not a part of any national platforms or political interest groups, and I think that we've heard some evading that part of the question here because some people can't say that clearly. So, no, I'm not a part of any national platforms or political interest groups or anything like that. I'm running because I was called, again, to run, and I took the charge, because I truly believe in serving the best interests of the children. I have supported our teachers and staff and always had the best interests of Ansel County schools in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
After, two years ago, after signing a slip stating that I didn't want my daughter to have a laptop, because I provided hers for her, one week after that, I found that same laptop that the school gave her in a downstairs bathroom under the cabinets. I pulled my daughter out of the school then. She hasn't been since. We homeschool now at a Christian academy, and, you know, I've heard before, well, your kid's not in school, so what makes you think you run for the board? Well, we have retirees on the board too, you know. Just because I pulled my daughter out of school does not mean that I don't seek the same benefits that my daughter has. Since she's left the school, I enjoy the curriculum that she has, the freedom, she can write in cursive, she knows her math, she does everything else, but just because I pulled my daughter out does not mean that we're not obligated to serve the community. So the reason why I'm running, and, oh, no, I have no affiliations with any partnerships or, no, I'm running on my own, but the reason why I'm running is because I'd like to see the same benefits that homeschoolers have in public school. I mean, these guys, the ones that worked here, they put a lot of work in, so, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Urbansky?
Yes, I do have a son. He does go to Silverdale Elementary School. And as a parent, honestly, I was hesitant to put him into the public school system here because I was nervous just hearing everything that goes on here. But, you know, I took the leap of faith. God called me to enroll him in public school, and we did just that, and actually, my husband got orders to DC, and we did not move there due to the school system. So I had a lot of hope after I kind of overcame my initial fears of the public school system here and enrolled him. And we have had a wonderful experience, and kind of my reasoning to serve for the board is because I may be seen as one of those overbearing moms or extra-involved moms, but I believe that the children need that, and not only my child, but all the rest of the children in the school. They need to see structure, they need to see parents involved, because some of them don't get that in their home life. And, you know, I would use some of my, a lot of my time to actually go serve in the schools and benefit all the children.
Mr. Williams?
So no partnerships, no platforms. Yes, we currently have a daughter in middle school. Stated before, Ansel County schools is great to me. Uh, stated before, Onslow County Schools is great to me. Uh, it's been great to our oldest daughter, um, and our younger daughter as well. Um, so no concerns with the school system and how hard the teachers have worked, um, to push them, sometimes get them out of their comfort zone, which I appreciate that. Um, I'm running, I love to serve. Like I said, I spent half my life in serving. Um, I'm eligible to retire probably in September, God willing. Um, I can stay healthy. Um, whether I retire, I don't, I don't know, but I want to continue to service in case I do. Um, and continue to give back to this community, um, and work with Onslow County Schools.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Oakley, we'll start this round with you, and we will move to your left.
Oh, boy.
That's true, that's right. And then we'll come back, uh, and then we'll come back in the other direction with Ms. Long and Glenn.
That way.
How about that? So, uh, next question, Glenn.
You're not surprised to hear that many people talk about some of the schools that are overcrowded and out of date? We've had conversations about lack of security because of the way that schools were once run and how things are. The most recent elementary school cost forty-four million dollars. It is quite different. As a school board must receive funding allocated from the county commission, what would you communicate about activities that promote more development and adding new families to the Onslow population?
Huh, first of all, I have begged the commissioners to put up a no vacancy sign in Onslow County at every corner that we have an entrance, because we are busting at the seams, particularly in the Stump Sound-Holly Ridge area. Um, which projectively, we will be looking at possibly building a new high school by 2027. That's been what's on the, on the projection range of possibly needing that. But thankfully, our district has been proactive already, um, in matters as that, seeking grant funding of upwards of ninety million dollars. So that if that is approved, Dixon High School itself, which is now one of the largest populated schools in the county, overpopulated, should I say? Um, so that, that school could be renovated and expanded as necessary, with grant funding that would not require a match to tax dollars. I'm sure the chairman back there is smiling and happy about that one. But, so with that kind of thing, um, looking for grant funding, how we can expand, um, our school needs and assets to bolster the security of them, and also expand them to meet the growth that we are so urgently having to face. So, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
So earlier, when I ans, uh, when I did my opener, um, you know, I talked about the assessments. And the response that we keep getting is, the school district did this, the school district did that, the school district did this. Uh, the community is not involved in this process. It's not. Um, I just heard, uh, one of my colleagues mention that we had a security assessment, uh, conducted. Well, no, we didn't. We had, we had a regular security assessment. No comprehensive security assessment has ever been done in the district. If we're gonna build schools, this has to be a regular process. Uh, it, it has to be so standardized, so normalized, that as we're building a school, we, we know exactly how we're gonna build it for safety and security. We know exactly what communities are going to be integral to that school. Uh, th- these are things that we, we have not done. Um, there is no standardization of community assets and resources to facilitate the growth of a school or the growth of a community. Uh, so as we move forward with the money that we have, I mean, yet the ninety-one million dollars, it can go, uh, to, to the development of a new school. I, I welcome the growth of our community. So let's hope the school district can keep up with it.
Ms. Rambansky?
Um, as a military family, obviously, you know, uh, over thirty-four percent of our students are coming from military orders, um, PCS orders, whatever that may be. So the, some of these kids have seen three, four, five, six schools in different countries, different states, whatever that may be. Um, so I believe also that, you know, all over the wor, all over the country, we are seeing overcrowding, and I think it's imperative that the district does, you know, allocate funding. And I unfortunately don't know details into that now, so I don't have the perfect answer. Um, I'm willing to be collaborative on that, to find better solutions to what the problem is. Um, but I do believe that with such a heavy military population, it's, it's going to be ever-changing, because that is such a big percentage of, um, students that are coming and going constantly. So like I said, unfortunately, I don't have a direct answer, but I do believe that, um, I could be collaborative to come up with a solution.
Mr. Williams?
So I, I think we need to, um, so we have, uh, threat assess officer, threat assessment officers that work with, um, um, Onslow County School System. Uh, I think we need to invite, uh, when we look at building a new school, we need to invite our law enforcement partners, uh, to give input, um, on security issues, uh, and how a school is built, uh, and safety issues. So, uh, Carolina Forest is a prime example inside the city. It's a traffic nightmare that I've dealt with for a very long time. Um, so bringing in those law enforcement partners, um, I think would be beneficial. Um, the, the county commissioners and, and, um, the school board have a great working relationship. It would be nice, if I'm correct here, I think the federal funding is probably the least out of the, how much the state provides, um, and the county provides when it comes to building a new school. So since we are a military town, um, I think it would be nice if we can get some more federal funding, um, for those schools.
Glenn's gonna repeat the question in a second, and we'll start with Ms. Long and come back this to, this way. Um, which I guess is, you're right.
So at the root of the question is, we know there's some overcrowded schools, and the school board has to receive funding allocated from the county commission. What is you, what would you communicate to the county commissioners about what activities that promote more development and adding new family to the Onslow population have on your operations?
Uh, I think if you look at the long re, long-range facility needs, I, I looked at it recently. I think by 2029, twenty of our elementary and middle schools will be at capacity or overcapacity. Um, the median, median age moving in is, is a young, a young crowd. I, I do want to caution, when you look at safety, and I agree about bringing in law enforcement and all that, but you, I've heard people say, well, we need to build our schools up. We need larger schools. If you look at the research on safety, it is related to school size, and that only makes sense, because it's harder to monitor two thousand students versus six hundred students. So yes, I think we do need to, to look at other funding sources and input from the community.
Mr. Yu?
Well, uh, I'm not running for the commission, but I would ask them to lower the property tax and raise the sales tax. That way we can get some better revenue. Uh, but I think we really do need to focus on looking for those federal grants, and the infrastructure and building issue is probably one of the most important issues that we're facing, especially with the growth that our town is having. So I would ask that the commission be very cognizant of what we need as a board, and be willing to work with us to ensure that we have all the funds that we need, or they're hooking us up with the resources that we can get the funds needed to build up our infrastructure.
When you look at, look at our schools and where we're going, you're looking at some really long-range plans. And it's gonna take, uh, the whole community to work with this. We've been very successful working with our county commissioners in Onslow County. But we have other businesses and things we can go out to. And part of that's gonna be having that united front, showing, we're gonna work together. We're gonna get what our children need and make sure it's a safe environment. But we're gonna have to look at it long-range. Where are we going? What is it, where's it projected? Where's the new growth? I don't think we do, we always, I know we do a lot of that, but continue with that. Continue looking how we're going, and make it a community involvement. Get input. What isn't working when we built the last one? What was not happening? What did happening? And what can we do now about it? But the big thing is just gonna look where we're going and how we're gonna get there. Because, yeah, I mean, when I first came here, I think the only store basically in town was Roses and Mammoth Mart. So we have grown.
Mr. Harvick?
Uh, there's no doubt people are coming to Onslow County. Uh, we're busting at the seams. An interesting fact is, is that Onslow County probably is one of the youngest counties in, in the state. I mean, our average age is about twenty-seven. So we have a lot of young parents, which is evident, because we're building a lot of elementary schools to support those young children. Um, we're working as hard as we can. We're building a new elementary school, Woodland Elementary. We're adding additions to Trexler, to, uh, Northwoods Park Middle. Um, honestly, I think redistricting is probably gonna become an issue more and more as we go further along. Um, when you look at our new schools, I think our new schools are being designed more with safety in mind, because our newer schools are all under one roof. Whereas some of our older campuses have multiple buildings. Jacksonville High School, for example, they have, I don't know, ten, twelve, fifteen buildings. So it makes security much more difficult. So our county commissioners have been very, very supportive of us, and I think we just need to be more creative when it comes to exploring state and federal, uh, funding, and also these grant opportunities.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir. We're gonna grow. We're gonna keep on growing. If you look at our, we had, uh, eight high school buildings that are pretty much outdated and, and hard to secure. But also, when you go to the, uh, elementary school, the newer ones, they got wonderful. If you've been to them, you need to go check them out, but they're really nice. They're laid out well. And one thing people need to feel, realize is, the traffic that goes in and out of school for kids being dropped off and picked up by their parents is ridiculous. I mean, it's a whole lot more than it ever used to be. Uh, I know they need to do that because of the bus situation and everything else, but, uh, a lot of times, their cars are out in the middle of the road, trying to wait to get in because of the traffic. So that needs to be a consideration too, when we build schools, is to consider the traffic flow in and out of the school as it, itself. And the, the commissioners know, they know what we need. I don't think they take a big sale, but they just need to know and understand that it is gonna continue to grow. Can't help it.
Okay. All right, okay. Mr. Rogers?
Oh, here we go.
Butler card?
All right. So, uh, I've, I've been waiting to hear in the, these answers, if anyone was gonna mention this. So, uh, in our last security assessment, um, has, did one place take part in that? Did True Justice? Did our EMTs? Did FIRE? Did local community counselors? Uh, did the county commissioners take part in that? The answer is no. If we're saying we're doing it because the Center for Safer Schools is telling us to do it, then why don't we do it by their standards? We're gonna ask the county commissioners for money, but we're not going to, uh, start the process the way the Center for Safer Schools requires us, or at least recommends. Um, because when we conduct a comprehensive assessment, they, we, we're supposed to find out everything. Dollar amounts, community growth, mental health, not just, uh, are our doors closing all the way. Um, so that's what we just received. We received the security for the school, which, yes, it was comprehensive for those schools. But as a district, we haven't even done that part yet. So if we're gonna go to the county commissioners, let's go with the full picture.
Thank you. And I wanted to, uh, I think we educators call this positive reinforcement, and thank you all for adhering to our time limits, because we're able to move right along with the questions. We will start, uh, this one with, uh, Mrs. Hallie, and we'll work our way to the end of the table, and then go with Mr. Hamm and work our way back.
This one's a little simpler. Um, what experiences do you have serving on a governance board? And would you complete the North Carolina School Boards Association Academy for School Boardsmanship before you begin, or as you begin your service?
I have not been on a governance board. That I, I've been on different boards and worked with stuff. I've worked with the National Science Foundation at one point, helping them realign the physics curriculum and stuff. But as to be on a governance board, if I think of what you're asking, no, I have not. I'd be more than glad to take the training. I'm a lifelong learner. I started out without a high school diploma, but the school system took me in and had me go through that, and I just keep moving through. Every time a door opens and I hear that knock, what's going on? Let's go find out about it. I, I would like to take it either way, to know what's going on. So I'd be, I'd be honored to take it.
Mr. Harvick?
Um, as far as being in, on any governance board, I, I have not other, you know, my only service has been on this Board of Education. Um, and part of being on the Board of Education is going to require trainings. Um, understanding what the roles and responsibilities are as a board member, what your, uh, not just responsibilities, but what your authority is. Uh, when it comes to dealing with the school system, when interacting with the superintendent, um, we don't deal with the day-to-day operations of the school system. That's the superintendent and his staff. We're more in line with the policy, the budget, and the evaluation of the superintendent.
Mr. Butler?
Only boards I've ever been on was Marine of the Month Board, or something like that. So I don't, I've never been on any of those kind of boards, although, um, as far as going to training, hey, I'm a clean slate. Send me to school, I'll learn it. All I can tell you. Out we go.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hamm?
All right. Um, I haven't served on any public governance boards, but in the Marine Corps, I did a lot of auditing and, um, mission planning. So that's a lot of what my experience was, is to ensure that everything is being, uh, run by policy, and that policy is being adhered to, and that we're making local policies that are in adherence with the higher policies and things like that. So that's, that's really how my experience would, um, translate to that. And I'm always willing to do whatever training is available out there. I'd be very interested to hear what they have to say. So, that's it.
You want to repeat the question, Glenn?
It's asking you what experience you have serving on a governance board, and would you complete the North Carolina School Boards Association Academy for School Boardsmanship?
I've served on state-level educational boards, even serving as an officer on those boards. I would say anyone would be remiss if they didn't take their training prior. Um, I would, would also say that we, we need to really promote what, there, I believe there are seven, seven overarching topics that a board member is responsible for. Um, I think we, we need to promote that to the community, and make them aware really what the responsibility of a board is, and, um, revisit that often. Thank you.
Ms. Oakley?
Mr. Harvick, would you repeat the question?
What experiences do you have serving on a governance board, and would you complete the North Carolina School Boards Association Academy for School Boardsmanship?
Well, first of all, my experience as a board member, um, this is a Board of Governance. Um, additionally, besides that, I guess you could include the VAX Task Force, um, working with the Lieutenant Governor and the team across the state. Um, just to point out here, the North Carolina General Statute 115C-50 mandates us to have twelve hours every two years of training. Um, when you become a board member upon election or appointment, you have to get what is called core training, and you have to get, um, your ethics training, which is conducted by the North Carolina School Board Association. So it really wouldn't be a negotiable thing if you want to serve, because it is state law. Um, I have, um, conducted plenty, or not conducted, but participated in plenty of training. I have lots and lots of training hours. Um, we also have the virtual subscription, so I, I take part in that whenever we don't have those in-person trainings, just to keep up with things that are happening around the state, like, um, public school law, um, different things that are coming down through the Supreme Court with case law and things like that. So it's important to keep, um, up with your professional development, to stay with your feet on the ground. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Uh, I've only served on two. One was the Pierce Family Development Board, uh, and the North Carolina Friends of State Parks Board. Um, but, uh, definitely different than the, the school board. But again, I go back to the same topic. Uh, we talk about the way that the school board is supposed to govern, and we, we talk about the board members stepping back, letting the superintendent run the school system. Yes, that's exactly how we're supposed to do it. But when there's an issue, um, that is a collective issue, uh, what is the board supposed to do then, when policy is not being enforced? Right? So we've never had that discussion of how the board is supposed to operate and function if there is a problem within the, the policy being enforced. Uh, and that's when board, it, it seems as though every other, um, government body engages with the community, but the Board of Education shouldn't. You know, no, as the school board, we're supposed to engage with the community. We are to go out into our communities and get feedback, and deliver that to the superintendent. So if it's a complaint, it's, we, we deliver that. If it's a praise, then we deliver that as well. But we are supposed to be integrated into our communities.
Ms. Rambansky?
Um, I do not have any experience on any governance boards, um, but any training that would come with the position, I would obviously be more than willing to, um, complete. And as many people have said, is always continuing your education, and continue, continuing your experience, and being collaborative with the community. I feel like training can get you, you know, the rules and the, um, policies you're supposed to follow, but then when it goes to implementing that, that doesn't always work. You know, you can, you can read the black and white, but, you know, there is so much gray area with everything. So I believe the collaboration with the community, the collaboration with, um, teachers, everybody involved is definitely necessary, as well as the training, and continuing training, um, to make an efficient school board.
Hey, Mr. Williams?
So, yes, I sit on, uh, quite a few boards, um, in my current occupation. I work with, uh, local leadership, um, engineers, uh, in the region, uh, with DOT, state DOT, um, for safety, um, traffic issues, uh, new businesses coming to town. Um, so, yeah, I, I mean, any opportunity that you can get, um, for training makes you more knowledgeable. Um, and according to Ms. Oakley, if you're elected, you don't have a choice. So, yes.
Okay, I think we have time for one more question. Uh, we'll, we'll start with Mr. Rogers, work our way to the, to his left, and, uh, and then we'll go back around to, uh, Mr. Butler. Um, Glenn?
All right. What is your philosophy of appropriate curriculum and subjects for the Onslow school system?
Um, that's very easy. That's very easy. Appropriate curriculum. The school district needs to teach our kids how to add, subtract, spell, read, write, history, and definitely like to keep them physically active. There's, it's not difficult. The community is supposed to be the ones that fills those other gaps. The district, we've been stretching our teachers so thin for so many years, putting this additional curriculum on them, when we just want you to teach our kids. We want you to, obviously, you grow social skills while you're in the class, but there's a community component to this that the school system, we don't need to be involved in. We could, we can facilitate the process, but when it comes to social, emotional learning, the community steps up and they, they're the ones that do that. So as far as the curriculum goes, just teach them math, teach them science, teach them social studies. Do we call that social studies these days? But, but you get what I'm saying. It's, that's what the curriculum should cover, and the community should foster the other growth.
Ransky.
So mine's going to be pretty short and sweet. I believe that the curriculum, that my philosophy would be to bring everything back to the basics. I mean, we have so much unnecessary additions in the curriculum these days and things that parents can't even help with. For instance, Common Core math. I can't assist my child, not necessarily mine, but you know, friends' childrens who are a little bit older with their math because it's not taught in a way that makes logistical sense. I mean, and I was recently in college courses where math is still taught the way it was taught, you know, 20 years ago, whereas now these children are learning a certain style in school, and they, they get out to the railroad and they can't apply that. They have to, it's essentially relearning. So I think it's important to really go back to the foundations of education, kind of like Mr. Rogers said, is the social, emotional learning. You know, I have friends in the, in the school system who are currently teachers in Onslow County, and I've had conversations with them about it. It's very frustrating as teachers that they have to apply those to every single subject when it doesn't really need to be that broad and, you know, it needs to be more of a parent effort.
Mr. Williams.
So yes, I agree with Ms. Ransky. You know, the basics. You've got to learn the basics before you can get to the advanced levels. You know, during the years when kids weren't in school due to COVID, sorry to mention that word, you know, helping, trying to help my daughter, I graduated a long time ago. So the way they taught it back then is different than the way they're teaching it now. She understood it, I just stood over her shoulder and was like, why are you doing it that way? And I tried to change her way of doing it, in my mind, to make it simple. I don't think there's, you know, there's not any problem. It's just a different way of learning compared to when I went to school to what they're teaching them now. But the basics are extremely important. Like I said, if you can't get the basics, then you can't move on to those more advanced level classes. But I think Onslow County school system and the teachers are doing a great job, so.
As we turn the corner and go to Mr. Butler, you want to repeat the question?
What is your philosophy of appropriate curriculum and subjects for the Onslow school system?
Okay. Well, math, obviously, I taught ROTC, and my kids didn't even know how to read a ruler. Simple thing. I had to teach them how to do that, so they can put the stuff on the uniforms. Reading, of course, and writing in cursive. Whoever took cursive out is beyond my understanding. I don't know why they would do that, but can't even read the Constitution unless you can read cursive, right? So get back with that. And of course, English and history, US history, true American, US history. When I walk through the hallway of elementary school and see every flag of, all these nations of the world, but I don't see any state flags up there, globalism to me needs to go away. It just, it just don't make any sense to me. Back to patriotism and back to the United States. Of course, ethics, I think ethics class should be taught. My students in ROTC loved the, when I taught them ethics, how to, you know, yes, sir, yes, ma'am, no, sir, no, ma'am, type of things, just respect. And the Bible says, treat a child the way they should go. When they get old, they want to depart from it. And that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Garvey.
Our most important goal when we educate our students is to make them productive, responsible citizens, and that's to provide the basic education that they need for that. Reading, obviously, not just reading, but reading for understanding. Making sure that when they go out into a store, that when they look at 25% off, they can in their head figure out, this is how much money I get off of this. I think we need to continue to emphasize history, how this country was built, civics, how this country operates, so that these students can become more active in our government. I think our student interest should drive how far they go into a certain subject. So there are a lot of math that I took that I've never used since I've become an adult. And if I wanted to become a chemistry major or a doctor or something, then those are the students that need to go further in the math besides your basic math. We're doing a real good job now, not just emphasizing college, but also the CTE, our trade schools, and we need to continue to look at what our students are interested in.
Amen.
With Haley.
I definitely believe that we need to have the basics. They need to know what's going on. I also believe it needs to be age level and grade level appropriate. That is vital. And it must be taught without bias, without opinion. I was a science teacher. I taught the facts, just the facts, ma'am. And a lot of times I'm a facts person, give too many. But when we look at education, the problem is we are under guidelines, general statutes. We have a standard course of study. But within, even in it, it's to be taught grade level, age level appropriate. It also must be taught without my opinion, without my bias. It's taught to the child what they need to know. They need to know math, they need to know science, they need history. I guess you can find out here who are, what our loves or subjects are. They need science, but they need to be taught the basics. They need to have a basic understanding. Otherwise, the whole goal is to make a productive citizen, to grow. They're going to make decisions about me, and they're starting to make them because I'm getting older. And I want that child to be able to make those right decisions and to be able to problem solve and know why that was the decision.
So I agree with the total basics. That's got to be priority number one. But in addition to that, I think we need to be more cognizant of exactly what these programs are that they're trying to implement, like the social, emotional learning. And I like how Mr., Randall? I like how he mentioned the globalism because the social, emotional learning kind of goes right into that because it's taking kids' ability to make decisions for themselves away, and they change it to the group. It's group think training. So we have an issue right now where kids are, or people, citizens are forgetting that we have individual rights in this country and not collective rights. And a lot of people forgot that during the 2020 pandemic. So we need to get away from things like that, and we need to look at what's the motivation behind these weird programs that don't seem to make sense. And if we see that, we need to actively push against it. That's my philosophy on that.
Ms. Long.
So, so teachers are charged by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to teach the North Carolina Standard Course of Study and Essential Standards. Where I think the confusion comes in is the curricular tools used to push forward those standards. That's where parents can have input, what curricular tools are chosen. So in the North Carolina Teacher Evaluation Standard, standard one, it really says that a teacher's push is to make sure that kid graduates K-12. So, so all of that is kind of set, but I certainly do think we need parent input on the curricular tools that are chosen.
My Western Carolina roots are fixing to come out. Read, write, arithmetic, those three things. That's the main focus of what our children need to have. However, in today's evolving society, they do need to have additional tools. And yes, we still teach cursive. It is a part of our CKLA curriculum. Parents do have a voice, and also do teachers have the opportunity to give feedback. Whenever we are considering a new curriculum, we have what is like a workshop kind of night where people can come out and they can view each of those curriculums being considered. We have done that for sixth grade math. We've done that for English Language Arts. So we will continue to do those things regarding things like the Pledge of Allegiance and the flags. Well, we do that. It's a part of our Policy 3530 that mandates that we have the Pledge of Allegiance in all of our schools every day, and the state and the United States flag are posted. These are just things that are out there that, you know, they might be happening in other states, and they might be happening in other counties like Woke County, excuse me, but they're not happening in Onslow. So I'm happy for that. Do we have everything right with curriculum? No, but we have to follow state standards. We have to recognize our community's majority identity and the values that we have here. So that's how we weed out the things that we don't want. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that, I think we're through with the questions. And we're going to move to slide right into the closing statements. Mr. Williams, we're going to start with you and go the opposite way this time, or that we did for the opening statements.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming today. Again, I go back to unity, coming together and not being so divided, you know, to accomplish the goal, which is our children, to educate our children and what's best for them. We have great students, great staff members, great parents. It's a great community to live in, or else everybody wouldn't want to be moving here. I think we need to, you know, collaboration. And I just keep going, you know, to working and seeing what the main goal, and that's, you know, keeping the children near our hearts, so.
Ms. Ransky.
I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to be here and participate today. And although I may have not had all the answers or solutions, I am dedicated to working towards finding the answers or solutions, and I believe that comes through unity as, like Mr. Williams was saying. I believe that having it as a whole community effort, because at the end of the day, I believe we do all have the children's best interests at heart. I believe the deliverance may be separate or different, and that may cause the, what we see as division, but I do believe there is a time and place, and there will be a, hopefully, a future of more united, a more united front for the children's sake. And, you know, I'm ready to not only serve on the board at meetings and whatnot, but as a physical presence in schools. So thank you.
Mr. Rogers.
If there's one thing I agree with my colleague about, it is definitely Woke County. Onslow County Schools just hired Woke County's School District Attorney, too. So that same district attorney, or school attorney, is now Onslow County's School Attorney as well. But as far as my closing statement, the role of the school board is to govern the schools, the school system, and it might not be pretty all the time. Our kids come first, but when business is conducted, it does not always look good. It never, it just, that's just the, that's how business is. But I do believe that everyone up here and everyone that's been on our board does have the best interests of our kids. And moving forward, regardless of who gets elected or appointed, I just, I know that everyone up here feels the same way about the kids. It's just how we do it. So no one person can fix everything. It's going to take multiple minds and multiple members of the community, and I'd like to see that happen while I'm still on the board. Thank you.
Ms. Oakley.
Well, here's our 90 seconds of fame. Some have sat here today and told you what they want to do and what they believe is not being done, but I'm going to sit here and attempt to relay what I have done. I have served in our board for three years and ran on policy revision as a platform point that has successfully been established, and that has been in action since 2021. It had been, some of those had not been revised in 20 years. I advocated for enhancing, maintaining our asset safety and prioritizing our Onslow County School students, mental health, teachers, and staff over wants. I ran on supporting TAs and increasing buzzdriver pay. Both of those things have been done. I have a proven track record of success and have spent time in our schools with our students, teachers, and staff, dedicated time to training and professional development to serve our students, parents, and teachers as best I can. I have the time. I've made great sacrifices, and I'm here looking for your vote of confidence to continue the work that you can be sure of. Remember to vote mo in the middle. Number five will keep OCS alive and moving forward into a brighter future. Thank you. God bless.
Ms. Long.
I'm going to keep it rather simple. Thank you for coming. I believe in public education. I don't think that there's anything more important than public education because children matter. There's not a parent out there that doesn't want more for their children than they had themselves, and together we're better. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond.
Like she said, public education is extremely important. That's how we mold our next generation that's going to populate our community. So we really need to ensure that we're doing it right, and I'm just one person, and I understand that one person can't make all the changes overnight, but what I can do is bring my principles and my ideas, and I can try to work with everybody and try to see what, what solutions we can come up with together. Because like everybody said, everybody on this panel here has the children, their best interests in mind first. So let's work together, see what we can do to improve our school system, and so we can improve our community.
It's Haley.
Thank you for letting me be here today. I really enjoyed it and get to see some of these smiling faces out there. That's made it nice up here speaking. I ran for the school board because I want to develop effective partnerships with all my stakeholders through what I call the H3 approach. You've probably heard it, it's your head, your heart, and your hands. When my head can figure out what's going on and know what's happening, and then my heart can get employed so I can listen to all sides and find the answer, then my hands can go to work. If I use that philosophy in life, and it's made me rather successful, I guess, with relationships, and I want to do that. I just want to work for our community and serve. I've always had the heart of a server. I've been a servant for the Lord and worked with children in our churches and stuff. And this is my, I really thought this is my next step in my educational journey in working with children and with our community. Onslow, we moved here on purpose. We weren't military. We wanted to live here. We wanted to be a part of this community, and I still want to be a part of that community and find the pathways to success for everybody. And to be here with open heart for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garvey.
I am not a politician by any means. What I am is a retired educator who unfortunately is serving in a position that has become more political. I spent a career advocating for our students and our teachers, and I continue to do so. And as such, my goals are really pretty simple. I want to continue to encourage our parents to become involved in their child's education. We need more parents to become participants in their child's education for them to become successful. I want to continue to recruit and retain good teachers for our school system. And lastly, I want to continue to work closely with the superintendent and his staff to ensure that our principals and teachers have all the support and resources that they need to educate our students and to keep them safe.
And Mr. Butler.
First and foremost, thank you for coming today. I do appreciate it. We have 40 schools, and there are public schools in Onslow County. We have 27,264 students in our school system. That's a lot of people to be worried about, to be concerned with. I look at it at a different angle than most people because I worked as a school resource officer. So I see, you know, you can have a great school system, but if they don't feel comfortable sitting there listening and learning, it's hard for them to pay attention. So I know all this has to come together. That's why you need a team, because there's different expertises in each area. While I bring to the table security and safety for the school, for the kids, I've also been a teacher, so I know how the teachers feel, and of course, my dad, that's my favorite part, my grandpa's pretty close, too, but, you know, love the kids. If you don't love the kids, you shouldn't even be up here, but I think we all do. God bless you. Thank you for coming.
All right. Well, again, thank you to the candidates, and thank you, Mr. Hargit, for your questions. And I will turn it over to Lorette Lee Ginn, our President of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Elliot, and thank you to LaShay Cavers, excellent timekeeper today, and thank you to all the candidates for adhering to the time limits. We got a lot of good information, and we truly appreciate it. Also want to thank the city of Jacksonville for the use of these facilities and their media service department, and of course, thanks to our sponsor, Duke Energy. For our viewing audience, if you missed any part of the forum, just check the listings for G10 for rebroadcast times and dates.